Welcome, everybody. Glad to see everybody here today. We have a full house. I call this meeting in the Prosper Independent School District order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551. Mr. Beavers, would you please lead us in an invocation?
Absolutely. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day and this time for us just to come together, Lord. And, Father, we thank you so much for Prosper ISD. We thank you for your hand of blessing on our district, Lord. We pray this evening, just asking for wisdom and discernment as we weigh out the different issues that face our district right now, Lord. And also, we just pray right now for our students, our teachers, our administration, as we are here in the last little bit of this school year. And, Lord, we just ask that you give us strength and perseverance to push forward to the end. We thank you so much for all the love that you've shown to us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Let's rise with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, it is time, we're moving into public comment. I get to read this every time we do public comment, so bear with me. The Board encourages public comment. All public comments at a regularly scheduled meeting should be limited to school district governance and operations. If you have a specific concern related to an employee of the district or a specific student issue, you are encouraged to utilize the district's grievance procedures provided in Board Policies FNG, DGBA, or GF Local. Pursuant to Prosper ISD Board Policy, BED Local, audience participation at board meetings is limited to the portion of the meeting designated to receive public comment in accordance with this policy. At all other times during a board meeting, the audience shall not enter into discussion or debate on matters being considered by the Board unless requested by the presiding officer. When necessary for effective meeting management or to accommodate large numbers of individuals wishing to address the Board, the presiding officer, that's me, may make adjustments to public comment procedures, including establishing an overall time limit for public comment and adjusting the time allotted to each speaker. However, no individual shall be given less than one minute to make comments. As presiding officer of this meeting, I have set the overall time limit for public comment to 30 minutes. And based on the number of individuals who have signed up to speak for public comment at this evening, each individual will be allotted two minutes to speak. So we have exactly 15 signed up. So that's how the math works out, in my mind, anyway. We do have several from the same family. You're welcome to speak. You get your two minutes like everybody else, but if you wanted to get together so we can have this proceed more efficiently, if you're going to say the same thing, that would be very helpful. The Board of Trustees appreciates your active participation in the school district. And our first speaker tonight is Mr. Troy Smith. Please come forward and tell us your name and address, and you'll have your two minutes. Mays Davenport will be our timekeeper. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
My name is Troy Smith. Address is 3208 Sprucewood Drive. Thank you for having me here. You know, I came with a great speech full of facts, but I'm just going to tell you my story and hopefully it can make a difference. In 2019, so let me give you three numbers, 12, 23, and 2. Remember those numbers. So in 2019, right at the end of the year, two days after Christmas, I had knee surgery to replace cartilage in my knee. It's about my eighth knee surgery. It should have been a breeze. It wasn't. I developed a disease that has no cure for complications of my surgery. It's called CRPS. And if you've never heard of that, that's Chronic Regional Pain Syndrome, or if you look it up, it's easier to find if you look up suicide disease. My body generates pain, uncontrollable pain, all the time. I have a stimulator in my back that tries to help dampen the pain. It does, but I live in constant pain. And the best way that I can describe the pain for people to understand what I mean is if you ever had a kidney stone, that pain when you're trying to pass it, it's worse. If you're a mother and you're in labor pains, and that labor pain hits and the contraction hits, it goes away. Mine doesn't. It's worse. It's always there with me, no matter what I do. It can flare up at moments' notice. It's been hard. It's been different to figure out how to navigate the world other than now with my kids and wanting to be active with them. And it is just different, for sure. So the reason I tell you about my story, the numbers 12, 23, and 2, I was out of work for 12 weeks, had 23 surgeries last year, and 2020 tried to figure all this out. And the 2 was the amount of times that I was hospitalized because of this. One was over Easter in 2020, and that was complete isolation by myself, nobody around. Tough. But the medicine was good, for sure. You can add some of my friends I texted, apparently it was. But, you know, I try to find the laughing moments in it because I have to, because if I can't laugh about it, how can I get through it? I tell you all this for one simple reason. I hate this mask. I really do. I'm a people person. I love being around people. If my job was just to talk to people, I'd be the richest person in the world. And I do, I like to see everybody.
Mr. Smith, your two minutes, if you can just kind of wrap it up, that would be great. Sorry to pressure you.
Hey, me being shorter than two minutes is tough. The point is, you know, the mask isn't about me. It's not about the Board. Honestly, it's about protecting the people that need the help protecting. The Board was faced with the tough decision of, you know, damned if I do, damned if I don't, and they made a decision to go with the mask because they lead with compassion. And compassion is what we should always be leading with. And if you can't teach the kids and the people in this world compassion, that sometimes you've got to put your interests above yourself, I don't know what else to tell you. There's no book on parenting, but that's probably the number one rule I could ever give anybody. So if you want to be mad at somebody, I'm right here. You can come and be mad at me, because I don't care. I honestly don't care. I can take it. I've been to hell and back, and I'm more than happy to have that discussion with you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you for taking the time to sit with us. So sorry about your pain, my goodness. Thank you for sharing. Quinn Geider? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Quinn Geider. My address is public record. At the end of my fifth grade year, I had to go to e-learning because of COVID. I didn't know that the day we left for spring break in 2020 would be the last time I saw my friends. Learning at home was not my thing. Now skipping the lockdown summer, I was given the choice if I wanted to go back to school in person. I was so lucky I was given that choice. When I went back to school, I did off-campus PE. Now, opening my auditorium was a great risk. Because of swimming, we take off our masks early before we get in the pool. However, as a competitive swimmer, being able to train with my coaches and friends gave me life in my soul. I asked 11 people at Hayes Middle School, "Do masks help?" I got 10 out of 11 people who said that they do. Dr. Ferguson is a great superintendent. She has been doing her best to keep teachers, students, admin, and the rest of PISD staff safe and healthy. At this point, I would like you to join me in a well-deserved "thank you" for Dr. Ferguson I understand that everyone has an opinion about face masks. However, I feel the decision to open school with face masks for students age 10 and above has allowed me to engage in activities such as choir, swim, orchestra, and engineering that I would not have been able to do had Prosper ISD decided to do 100% online learning. Here's the thing, they gave us a choice that so many districts around us did not. Having to wear a mask has allowed me to do all the things that were part of my normal. My friends and I know that the time will come that we don't have to wear a face mask, and that will be a great day for us all. However, that has not stopped us from living life, having fun, and laughing. Now repeating one of my favorite quotes, "Stars can't shine without darkness, so even if it's a really dark moment now, we will shine brighter than we ever have before." Dr. Ferguson, the Board, my teachers, thank you for all that you do for this school district. The only way we're going to get through this virus if we think of as me, not as we, not me.
Thank you for sharing that, Quinn.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. I'm not going to address masks. I'm actually going to address District of Innovation, so I'm addressing the 741 Salt Lake Court. I'm expressing concerns with language written in District of Innovation packet that requires clarification from the Board. Section E, Certified Employee Contract Rights, on page 6 of the packet, there is a request to exempt the district from TEC 21-211. TEC 21-211 is an important employee protection which gives sole authority of the Board to trustees to suspend a teacher without pay. As far as I understand, the legal language of Texas Education Code, T21-211, in Prosper ISD Board Policy, DFBA Legal, the Board has a sole authority for suspension without pay, according to these documents. For good cause, as determined by the Board, the Board of Trustees may suspend a teacher without pay for a period not to extend beyond the end of the school year. There's some other disclosures in there. This aligns with the other policy, DFBA Local, which gives a superintendent the authority to suspend pay while being placed on administrative leave during an allegation of misconduct. Here is the language that Prosper ISD is seeking to exempt itself from. It says, "This would allow the district to have the flexibility to suspend a teacher without pay under an allegation that's covered in Educator Code of Ethics." This language is troubling for multiple reasons. Here, the district is not defined as to who would have the authority when Texas Education Code specifically reserves this right to the Board of Trustees. Also, there's language in the Educator Code of Ethics that is ambiguous based upon the district and who they might be in determining alleged offenses. I'll point to Educator Code of Ethics. Standard 1.10, "The educator shall be of good moral character and be worthy to instruct and supervise youth of this state." In this case, who gets to decide morality and worthy to instruct and supervise youth? This could be in the Future Aid Tool to determine political or moral limits tests and removes due process from teachers. This essentially gives the potential for teachers to be guilty until proven innocent, and I implore this Board to refine the language and not exempt any Texas Education Code policy that restricts employment rights or progressive discipline procedures. I support Prosper ISD to support teachers and educators and their employment rights.
Thank you, Mr. Cochran. Appreciate you sharing your thoughts.
I'm Emily Cochran, and I live at 741 Salt Lake Court. And I'm here today, as I and other parents have been since September, to address the Board about masking our students, although those aren't our only concerns. Month after month, we voiced our concerns, asked questions, presented data, offered solutions. Somewhere along the way, it's been suggested that because we speak out, we somehow do not support the district or our Board. I support PISD. I also support transparency and accountability. I support fact-based decisions. I support civil discourse and discussions. These things, just like many parts about the mask debate, are not mutually exclusive. We can support and do these things together. And while I can only speak for my actions, I certainly can understand the frustrations of parents who feel as though their concerns or experiences have been falling on deaf ears. It's because I support our ISD that I'm here. It's because I support our ISD that I pay attention to what's happening here and make sure I use my voice. I'm sure we can all observe that in 2021, tribalism is pervasive. The mentality of, "If you're not with me, you must be against me," is divisive and, quite frankly, exhausting. It lacks nuance, and while that's not as exciting as putting others in boxes, it's what we should be striving for. We all want what's best for our district, and I support what's best for our kids, and I support making sure our voices are heard. That's why we're here, and that's why we will keep coming and will continue to come.
Thank you, Mrs. Cochran. Appreciate you coming up and sharing your thoughts. We have four Creole family members, I'm supposing your family members. Do we all want to go one at a time, or we want to go together? One at a time, awesome. Ella Creole first, please.
Hi, my name is Ella Creole. My address is public record. I have been going to Rocker Elementary. I love the school, but I have been having trouble with bullies. While I was in person, I was constantly bullied. I was in an unsafe environment. I find it unacceptable that they had been bullying me for so long. Once we reported it, I find it concerning that these kids were bullying me, and it did not stop. If I go in person next year, I would like the bullying to stop, so that way I feel like I am safe. Sometimes I see the fifth graders fighting at recess, and sometimes it's boys and girls fighting each other. This scares me, and I do not want to be caught in one of these. I would like to see the school district be vulnerable to bullying. They say they have zero tolerance, but clearly they have a lot more tolerance because it keeps happening. Next, I was sent home from school for not wearing a mask. I find it very ironic that the same day I was sent home, I was given this assignment called "Kids Can Make a Difference." It was about kids having a voice. I thought, "Why did they send me home and silence my voice for not wearing a mask?" This is very frustrating and sends me mixed messages. I have a voice, but they won't let me use it.
Thank you, Ella. I much appreciate you taking the time to share with us. Thank you very much, Ella.
Hi, my name is Logan Creole, and my address is public record. I will also be talking about the mask mandate. I shared the view of my little sister on it. A quote I want to share with you is from this one band called Citizen Soldier. "If these scars could speak, you would know my pain and the demons that hide in my brain." Some of our scars are physical, and they can speak volumes to what we've been through, though some of them, we can't. We can't see them, and they can't speak. We can't see the scars that others may have. And I know that you like to say that the students are thriving, though I'm there day in and day out, and all of us are suffering. We're having a very, very hard time, and we're not thriving. My generation, Generation C, is known as a generation plagued by mental illness. Yes, COVID-19's been terrible. We've all been affected. Yes, it sucks, and we want to protect people. Though the true threat to our society, to all of our people, is not that. That's not the biggest threat to us, is the silent killer that can kill overnight, one that I've almost lost my life to, time and time again. Is that a mental illness? Anxiety, depression, and other stuff of the sort. People of my generation are very, very threatened by this. This disease sucks, but the mental illness is worse. If we're going to approach this with compassion, like the first gentleman said, which I agree, we should approach this with compassion. And though if we truly care for people, we should make the mask an option. For those who want to wear it, they can wear it to feel protected and protect others, if they feel it works. Though with this disease, that even the CDC recognizes has a 97% to 99.7% recovery rate is not as bad compared to the mental illness, which takes away the lives of many every single year, and in a much more silent manner, and we don't even want to talk about it much. If you have the compassion, please vote to make the mask at least optional for a minimum next year for the students who are going to be here next year. I may not be, but at least make it for them.
Good. Thank you, Logan. Appreciate you sharing. Thank you, Logan. I appreciate you sharing very much.
Hi, my name's Wayne Creole. My address is public record as well. I appreciate you guys very much. You guys volunteer for this, spend a tremendous amount of time and effort for your duty serving the community, and I really, really appreciate that. I would also like to have you guys, you know, look at making the mask optional is just one thing. I know that people that do have illnesses that need to be extra cautious, they need to be extra cautious no matter what. Whether people are wearing masks or not, they still need to be extra cautious for their own health reasons. But for those that are healthy, they should have the option to wear a mask or not. And then if we really want to do something, let's actually make the mask actually functional or working. You know, what we have now, everybody here, I see people with it off their nose, or a shield, or holes on the side, it's not really doing the job. So just ask for making some actual things that are going to help, but make the mask optional. And then for my daughter, for her dealing with bullying, it's very hard as a father of a little girl, when the little girl comes home crying, "Not go hurt a child." And it's repeated. So I would ask that you guys look into these, I don't know if, maybe not aware, but look into the bullying issues and actually make it not tolerable. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Creole. I appreciate you bringing it to us, and we will be looking into that. Shelley Creole.
Hi, my name is Shelley Creole. My address is public record. In the dress code, it says all students must wear face coverings that cover their nose and mouth. For two weeks, my son wore his airsoft mask. It completely covered his mouth and nose, but it's an airsoft mask. You know, it did the job where it covered his mouth and nose. And not one teacher complained for the entire two weeks, until they had a substitute teacher. The sub came in and made a very unprofessional scene and had to be held back while her shrill voice was ranting in my son's face. Then the principal decided to create his own rules on what is and what is not acceptable for a face covering. It completely covered his nose and mouth. The principal decided to have a conversation with me on speakerphone in the cafeteria in front of all the students in the class. He could have asked my son to come to the office to discuss in a more private place, but he did not. This was incredibly unprofessional. Instead, he was made to be an example of an overreaching power and authority to play judge, jury, and interpreter of what the district had already outlined in its dress code as face coverings on their page. He said they went by the CDC guidelines. So I went to the CDC site. On the CDC site, it does show that indeed medical-grade masks and cloth masks are acceptable as long as there's no holes on the edges. So these ones that are popping out on the side are not very effective. For the ones that are below the nose, they should not be worn that way, if that's the case that we're going to do. Face shields. How many people do we see with face shields in the school, the children? If we are going to make a stand against one person for what they have, it should be across the board. No hypocritical direction. It should be solid and concise in your notes. I don't believe we should have this. I believe it should be optional. Allow people to protect themselves that need protection and give those who have the ability to wear a mask if they need it. And if not, then let us get back to a normal so that, like she said, she could breathe while she was swimming again. We need more.
Thank you. Appreciate you sharing. Thank you for bringing your concerns to us. Next up is Carson Clayton. Did I get that right?
Yes, sir. I'm Carson Clayton. My address is 179 Town Lake Drive. Has my time started? Okay. So I'm a senior at Prosper High, and I'm involved in a program called PCIS, which is an independent career study. Through this program, we're encouraged to make connections and find a mentor to guide us through our second semester, which is research for our final project. My final project is special needs advocacy. So I'm planning on making a playground for special needs students through my church. We're renovating our special needs ministry, and I get to work alongside them while they renovate our playground. So I thought, "Why stop there?" So that's why I'm speaking before y'all today. I would like to present the idea of implementing resources and just resources and equipment in either playgrounds or the schools to encourage inclusion and involve the special needs students in everyday life of the students. So whether it be at the playground, in the classroom, sensory boards, different equipment for the disabled children, just whatever works. Usually when people hear special needs resources, it's something that they think can be very costly, however, it can be as budget-friendly as we need it to be. Also, I know the community would completely back this idea, as I've reached out to many people across everywhere in Prosper. I know Prosper is growing as well, so at a very fast rate. And I just hope that we keep special needs students in mind as we grow and encourage inclusion for them as well. With that being said, I request that this be an item added to the agenda in the future, just to discuss with the community involvement. So also, I'd like to add that I've been a student here since fifth grade, and I really appreciate all that you've done for me, because I'm graduating next month. So thank you so much for all the help you've done.
Thank you, Carson. Thank you very much, Carson. Okay, thank you, Carson.
Good evening. My name's Leanne Edgar. I live at 13829 Monstrel Road. Thank you for hearing me. We moved our family to Prosper ISD three years ago because of the excellent reputation of this district. My kids made friends in a new place, and this quickly became our home. Over a year ago, of course, the world changed for everyone. Since then, my kids have been home doing school for over a year now. This school year, that was actually a personal choice that we made, not based on fear of a virus, but based on personal convictions. We made the decision as a family based on our conviction to stand up for what we believe in and stand against what we believe to be overreach government tyranny. This country was founded on personal liberty, and beyond that, we have a fundamental human right to make personal choices for our own health and well-being. But with every decision that we make, there are always consequences. My son is a sophomore. He's never stepped foot onto his new high school campus, Rock Hill High School. He's always earned As and Bs in school. He's self-motivated and genuinely wants to excel. He's always set high expectations for himself. He is social and has never met a stranger. Now, he sits in front of a computer screen all day, alone in his bedroom. He is lacking motivation, and his grades have dropped. He's barely passing some of his classes. He's alone and isolated. He has missed nearly half of high school, years he will not get back. My daughter is in sixth grade, also never stepped foot onto Hayes Middle School. She's a social butterfly, always has close relationships with her teachers, but this year, she's not even had the opportunity to meet her favorite teacher. She's also alone, sitting behind a computer screen, looking at friends in little boxes. As parents, we carry the weight of all of these choices on our shoulders. I believe deeply in my spirit that our God-given rights should never be taken from us, and that our freedoms, no matter how small or how large, are worth standing up and fighting for. I teach my children that. There have been multiple peer-reviewed studies, one most recently done by Stanford University, that demonstrates beyond a reasonable doubt that face masks have absolutely zero chance of preventing the spread of COVID, and actually have detrimental psychological and physiological effects. The most recent one posted on the NCBI branch of the National Institute for Health, there are currently 99 Texas school districts that have gone mask optional. One of the most recent being Katy ISD, with numbers equivalent to those of Frisco. They've made the choice to go... I'm sorry, I have one sentence left, sir. I appreciate you. They have gone mask optional, which gives everyone the freedom to make the choice that is best for them. I implore you, as our Board, to make the decision to give our children and parents back the rights that should never have been taken from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Edgar. Appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us. Lillian Razika. I'm not sure how I said it, if I said that right? I'm sorry? Did I get it right?
I'm Lillian Razika. I live at 13829 Monstrel Road. My elementary graduation and first day to middle school were nothing like they should have been. I started sixth grade as a virtual learner, and I'm now ending it as one. And I'm honestly tired of my house. I really miss going to school and having a community. No one can breathe wearing a mask. No one can breathe wearing a mask. You have the ability to let every student choose whether they want to wear a mask or not. The science shows that masks do not stop the spread of viruses. This is all for a tiny virus that expect, that affects most people, just like the common cold does. A mask is just a piece of cloth that does no good but plenty bad.
Thank you, Lillian. Appreciate your sharing. Thank you very much. Always takes a lot of courage for students to come stand before the school board. I appreciate that very much. Stephanie Razer?
Razer.
Razer, sorry.
That's okay.
I try my best. I try my best.
Could bear with me for one moment, please. Hi, my name is Stephanie Razer. I live at 1524 Grove Drive. I'm here tonight to talk about a recent, a contract with Creative Energy LLC to provide equity and inclusion consulting services. I'm a little distressed, and I have a few questions. I'd like to read what they are. I don't expect you to answer them right now, but it would be nice if it came out on the website or something. First, um, it was presented under the guise of special education. I've since heard that there's a, something from the federal government that says that 15% of all special education has to go toward this, so maybe that's what y'all were trying to do, giving the benefit of the doubt. However, I'd also like to know, how many students do we have in the district that are both disciplinary and special education needs? Is this even a problem that we have in Prosper ISD? And if it isn't, then that 15%, we should fight to spend on special education students for things that they actually need. My second, was this a bid contract? And if so, what other companies applied? And why was this particular company chosen over those? My third, is there data supporting this problem? Again, I ask, is this a problem we even have? And I'd like to see that data that says, yes, this is a problem. If it is, I'd also like to know what alternatives have been tried before we spend $247,000 on this program? My fourth question, as far as this company, uh, where is their data that suggests that their program is even successful? That's a lot of money to spend. I myself personally looked on the website, and it's, everybody has accolades that the woman who runs the company is a very nice lady, but I don't see anything on there that suggests that her program is successful. That's a problem, because again, a quarter of a million dollars is a lot of money to spend on a really nice lady. My, my, my fourth question, I'm sorry, my fifth question was, was there any parent involvement involved in making this decision? Did you speak to special education parents? If not, why? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you sharing that. Thank you very much. Chrissy Ball.
Good evening, everyone. I am Chrissy Ball. I live at 4501 Mill Branch Drive. And I came tonight to just address y'all after watching a video of last board meeting regarding the masks. I know that everybody has their opinion, and I really do have compassion for those that spoke tonight. I'm grateful to come to hear both sides. And at the same time, what brought me here tonight was somebody's statement saying that this year was a disaster. I just could not stand back and not speak to say how amazing it has been that you all figured out how to get our students to school this year. During not a Prosper pandemic, this is a global pandemic. I have friends in California whose kids have never stepped foot in school, friends in New Jersey whose children are just now allowed to have half-days of school. So I do understand that there are people on both sides, that there are people on both sides that are suffering, people that have special needs, and, um, that we can continue this discussion. I, if people know me, am all for one, for a healthy debate. However, I am so appreciative of what y'all have done in not only bringing our students back, but standing in the gap of some pretty upset people to protect our teachers and our administrators, who put not only their health on the line every day to teach our children, but their family. So we need to think about those that are actually sacrificing themselves so that our children can be educated, so that they can actually have some sort of experience. My son also has special needs, and you have no idea what this year has meant to him. I'd like to acknowledge his teachers at Sprably Elementary, they have done nothing but amazing things. But truly, every school this year, staff, administrators, and all of the people that work silently, who literally put their health on the line, we need to acknowledge, we need to applaud, and we need to thank, and we need to redirect the money that's spent on billboards slamming our board to actually appreciate our students. So I just wanted to come here today, I will scream it from the mountaintops, thank you, thank you, thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. Thank you very much. Tracy Strickland.
Because I don't believe in these either. Tracy Strickland, I live at 104 Collin Green. I'm a 17-year resident of this town. I'm a nervous wreck right now. I really don't like to speak in public, but I really came here today, just like Ms. Ball, to support you guys. This was not an easy decision for anybody to make with the mask, with going back to school, but not being able to participate in sports right in the, on the bat, you know? It, it was tough, but you guys came together as a district, administrators, teachers, staff, custodians, everybody, to make school safe. And all I'm here to do is just say thank you. I saw some things today on social media that kind of disturbed me. Um, a lot of people making this a red-blue, Democrat, Republican-type scenario. I don't see it that way. I see us as green, and I see us as blue. And I just want us to come together, as Prosper, we are one, in support of what you guys are doing, support our teachers, our staff, our students, and everybody else. That's all I really have to say.
Thank you, Tracy. Wow, thank you very much. Um, and our last on the agenda is Mr. Marcus Ray. The Honorable Marcus Ray, I should say.
Thank you, guys. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Marcus Ray, 341 Stephanie Lane, and I printed it out so I don't go off cuff. I wanted to thank you, Prosper ISD Board, Mr. President, Superintendent Dr. Ferguson, for allowing me to speak tonight. I want to first applaud each person who's mounted the courage to stand up in front of a roomful of people and express their thoughts, comments, and statements on masks and policies. This is often a very hard thing to do, and yet wonderful blessing and gift given to us by people we may never know. You see this right, and the speech of liberty is something that, uh, everyone, maybe potential people in this room has fought for, some of us have lost loved ones for, and an endowment that our sons and daughters serve today to fend against. You see, freedom of speech for my house is very personal. My grandfather's decorated pilot is still MIA. My, uh, son, who graduated in 2018, is currently serving in the military, and so I take that very seriously. Pardon me, but Prosper, my wife and I initially homeschooled our two oldest kids, and she did a great job. Gwynn is an amazing woman. Uh, well, after a few more kids later, we knew the commitment was going to be too much for her and the family, so we took our oldest two to private school in Dallas while she cared for the younger ones. When we had our fifth child, uh, we did the math real quick, and all private schooling for five kids realized that we needed to find a community where schools were exemplary and the community was family-oriented. And on May 21st, 2004, Gwynn and I moved to Prosper and exponentially added to the population of 1,300, with our household of seven. So I, I tell you these things, uh, two items, to give you a bit of context and to set the premise of why I wanted to speak tonight. Having lived in Prosper for 17 years, I've often asked myself, what is it about Prosper that draws people? Right? What is it that, you know, is, is the attractor? When I was running for town council, this was the primary conversation starter that I used. What brought you here? Why are you here? Right? Um, without fail, everyone I spoke to moved here for the schools, or because they had children or grandchildren who moved to Prosper for the schools, without a doubt. Uh, I did not have one person state that they moved here for the bustling economy, the local university, the Fortune 500 company, yet, and the roads that were constantly under construction. I don't know if anybody would appreciate that, um, or anything of the like, although some may tell you it was for the hummingbird cake at the Cotton Gin. Think about why you moved here. For most of us in this room, it was for the quality and the expectation of excellence that Prosper ISD had for our kids. And I'll try to wrap it up. Appreciate it. In May, knock on wood, our fifth son, our youngest child, will graduate from PISD. Having lived through the ups and downs of getting five young kids through elementary, junior high, and now high school, each having different abilities, challenges, disabilities, strengths and weaknesses, I would not be honest with you, I said everything was always perfect. That would have been an unrealistic expectation. What I have seen is an exemplary school district led by quality servant leaders who not only were elected by the people, but hired the best teachers, who will pour life and love into these kids, teachers who are still engaged in our lives, kids' lives, selfless in time and in child-centric action, so much so that this passion has inspired our daughter to teach and return to the district. This past year, she went to work with the special needs classroom, and I watched an amazing event take place. This past year has been so hard on so many, but through it all, the decisions and plans made by the board and the superintendent for the benefit of the 25,000 students and staff. Not for five, not for 100, 25,000. Think of the companies you work for or that you lead today. Have you had to make a decision and then reevaluate or pivot that decision for the benefit of the whole? Of course you have. For the business leaders in the room, how many CEOs or board members do you know that started out this past year with one plan and strategy for success, communicated the plan, and then, given the circumstances, had to pivot the plan for the sake of the organization as a whole? Factoring and balancing feedback, guidance, and mandates, all with very real consequences.
Marcus, I hate to ask you to wrap it up.
Wrap it up. Perfect. Well, I, I just wanted to say that this board is no different. You guys have done an exemplary job. A good leader will lead free of division, will look for ways to pursue excellence without belittling others on the team or, or the teams that are currently leading. I would, I'll leave you with two, uh, in conclusion of two items. One is a quote, and one is a motto. The quote is, "Hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can do that." And that's Martin Luther King. The last is a motto, and it's actually the new motto of Prosper ISD, which I love. May we all be grounded by tradition and soaring to new beginnings, and let each of us find a way to come together for that new beginning. I think that that new beginning starts tonight. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Marcus. I echo what Marcus said. I thank everybody who spoke, uh, whatever your issue, whether your support, or criticism, or care, or concern with the board, I know it takes great courage. I, I spoke before town council just once, uh, and I knew all of the seven people, and I was nervous as I could be, so I'm grateful that you guys would do that. Okay, so we will be moving out of the open forum and moving into, nope, I think we're moving into the District of Innovation Plan.
Yes, the hearing on proposed District of Innovation Plan, so Mr. Crown over.
I got that language here. Sorry. We will now open the hearing for the district's proposed renewal of in additions to the District of Innovation Plan. The proposed plan has been posted for 30 days, as required by law. If anyone desires to speak about the proposed plan, please come to the podium to speak at this time. All right. Hearing, no one. Uh, the District of Innovation hearing is now closed, so the next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. We move into that portion, beginning with the approval of minutes.
One thing I do want to point out with the District of Innovation Plan, that was something that was, uh, born five years ago with the, uh, ability from TEA for us to do some local decision-making, which was a huge benefit. We worked on a committee, so from 2016 until current, so we're now in the five-year rotation of needing to update that, um, so that we can continue some of those great things that really truly were a benefit to our district. It's an action item later, I'm gonna talk about it. Okay. Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Counselor. Keep us, keep us running, right?
Yes, he does. Let's just go to the minutes. It seems to be safe, don't they, didn't it?
Let's do that.
You just need a motion.
Make a motion now, 50 minutes.
Well, let's make the motion for the whole consent agenda. Let's do that. You want to do that? So let's go through the whole consent agenda, and then we will
Okay.
Vote any actions there, right?
Okay.
Anything on, any on the minutes as they've gone by?
Nope.
Okay. Enrollment?
Our enrollment, uh, currently, actually, as of today, 19,708 students. When you received your board packet a little over a week ago, we're at 19,694, so we're hovering in on 20,000, believe it or not.
And how many, you said something about how many more that was in this time last year.
That is 2,658 students, more than what we had last year at this same exact moment.
Good grief. 2006, so that's essentially three elementary schools worth of kids.
Yes.
More than that. Wonderful. Good. Welcome, everybody.
Tons of opportunities ahead.
Right.
And then our construction update on Mike and Janie Reeves, as well as Mrs. Jerry Bryant. Mr. Dave Olasko, are you taking over?
Here we go.
That is the facility that we took action on in September, I believe, and so actually, even from this video, we're way ahead of that. The landscaping has gone in, so there are trees going up around that, and certainly some of that interior work that you saw is not dirt anymore, so, which is good.
We like that.
It's very good. It's huge positive.
Great.
even from this video, we're way ahead of that. The landscaping has gone in, so there are trees going up around that, and certainly some of that interior work that you saw is not dirt anymore, so, which is good.
We like that.
It's very good. It's huge positive.
Great.
even from this video, we're way ahead of that. The landscaping has gone in, so there are trees going up around that, and certainly some of that interior work that you saw is not dirt anymore, so, which is good. It's very good. It's huge positive.
Great.
That is the facility that we took action on in September, I believe, and so actually, even from this video, we're way ahead of that. The landscaping has gone in, so there are trees going up around that, and certainly some of that interior work that you saw is not dirt anymore, so, which is good. It's very good. It's huge positive.
Great.
That is the facility that we took action on in September, I believe, and so actually, even from this video, we're way ahead of that. The landscaping has gone in, so there are trees going up around that, and certainly some of that interior work that you saw is not dirt anymore, so, which is good. It's very good. It's huge positive.
Great.
That is the facility that we took action on in September, I believe, and so actually, even from this video, we're way ahead of that. The landscaping has gone in, so there are trees going up around that, and certainly some of that interior work that you saw is not dirt anymore, so, which is good. It's very good. It's huge positive.
Great.
That is the facility that we took action on in September, I believe, and so actually, even from this video, we're way ahead of that. The landscaping has gone in, so there are trees going up around that, and certainly some of that interior work that you saw is not dirt anymore, so, which is good.
We're going to cut a ribbon. I'm not sure what it signifies, but yeah, that's going to be fun, and it sounds like we'll have another one right behind that.
We will. We thought about combining all four, but then we were like, no, let's just.
It's a lot of speeches.
Yeah, it's a lot of speeches, so.
Okay.
But certainly exciting moments for all of us.
Absolutely.
Whenever we get to open new facilities and the excitement that comes with that. Next on the agenda, we have two fabulous students from Prosper High School, and they are actually part of our superintendent advisory council, or my superintendent advisory council, and that's Emma Reed and Abby Arnold are here to speak today.
Welcome.
Hello, ladies.
Hello. Hello. Do you want me to speak this way? This way?
You can just speak to us. They can hear. You can take your mask off too, since you're presenting.
Hi, my name's Emma Reed. I am a senior at Prosper High School. And first off, it is really weird seeing all of my old teachers and principals. I just wanted to talk about being on the superintendent's advisory council. So I've been on it the past two years, one year with Dr. Watkins, one year with Dr. Ferguson. But it's really amazing. We come in a few times a year. We meet as a group, and the best thing about it is it's student-led. We talk about the different topics, trends, what's happening, the pros and cons at high school, but also in our district. It's all high school students, but we aim at kind of, you know, hitting the points of the middle schools and elementary schools as well. The best thing, again, is it's student-led. It's 95, I would say, percent student-led. Ms. Holly only helps us when it's really, really needed.
Really, really neat.
But it's, it's amazing being on it, and it's so cool because we go in and it's an open room. Nobody judges you for your opinions, your, what you're wanting to talk about and come in with ideas. So that's just really amazing. I'm going to let Abby speak a little bit, because I could go on for a long time.
Thanks, Emma.
Hello, my name is Abby Arnold, and everything that Emma said, and also that I love being a part of the superintendent advisory council, because I feel like it gives y'all a different perspective to know, you know, what's going on in the school, not only with just solutions and issues, but also with new ideas. I think that it is important to hear from things as a student, because sometimes things get lost in translation through principals and teachers, and even though they're always there to, you know, try and make our lives better at school and try to better their ways for us, sometimes I just feel like things get lost. And so I think it's been, like, really amazing to be able to directly share our views and how we see things with Dr. Ferguson.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. And I will say, they don't hold back their opinions, which is, it's awesome, because they challenged me. And so we have about 40 students.
How many?
That are in the superintendent advisory council, so 20 from Rock Hill High School, nine through 12th grade, so freshmen all the way up to seniors. And then we also have our 20 from PHS, nine through 12th grade. It was pretty interesting. I think the first time that we met, we did a big circle around the room, and they had to sort themselves by when they landed in Prosper.
Ah.
And so if they began in kindergarten, and then the chain went on, but we couldn't talk, which was the big challenge, like trying to figure out how to sort ourselves. And so it was pretty interesting to see the bonds and the connections, especially with our kids that had been here K-12, and then the stories that occurred with our kids that maybe had moved here in eighth grade or at different times. One of the students, senior at this time, she said that she actually met her very best friend at a pizza luncheon at Reynolds Middle School.
Oh, wow.
Because her mother forced her to go. She did not want to, but she said, "I met my best friend there, and so it was the best thing that ever happened to me." But I know I provided feedback from them to all of you, but we certainly take that back to our principals too, to say this is what the superintendent advisory is saying, because we want to make sure that that gets down to the campus level, because every single time I meet with them, I learn something new and something I just have not thought about yet. So thank you, ladies.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so one of the things that I want to bring up to all of you and make sure that we're keeping good tabs on this, I know that Ms. Razor had a question about our engagement and our work with creative energies, and so I want to speak a little bit about that. The data in front of you, this actually represents K-12, because I think it's very important, even though there was a specific area on the results-driven accountability report that we receive from the federal government on each of our student areas, and those are with federal programs. So you're looking at career technical education, you're looking at bilingual education, you're looking at special education. And within special education, there are actually 18 indicators in that actual area on that results-driven accountability. And they send that report to us every single year, and within that, it breaks it down by male and female, it may, breaks it down by race and ethnicity, it gives you reporting on STAR testing, it gives you reporting on in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, and what's happening with our students. Now, the state and the federal government, obviously, the information gets sent to the state, and then the state has to report to the federal government. So some of you may be familiar with A3F accountability. That is the federal side of what happens with STAR testing. So even though we're STAR testing our students right now, that A3F piece will not be something that we have in place this upcoming year, or did we have it last year with COVID. When they provide their reports to us, it's not a one-year report, and then you're now needing to do corrective action. It is a three-year process. They're giving you a rating, they're giving you information, and so we have been working on this, not just for a year, and this didn't just come up overnight. This is something that we've been working collectively together to try to figure out with our administrators, with our different leaders across the district, with special education, because obviously that is a very specific area, but also with our teachers. We've taken this into leadership cohort meetings for that our leadership cohort group, our aspiring teachers, could say, what does this mean for us, and why would we need to be watching this as a leader? And there is a disproportionality currently with what Prosper ISD received, and this was last fall. So as we were rolling in, they were saying, okay, it is now at the level three, and corrective action will have to take place. We began then working with our regional service center, and they start providing us guidance on how do we address this issue and what are the ways in which to do that. We have worked through numerous, numerous, numerous plans on how best to address this concern. And the main thing at the end of the day is what you ask yourself is what is going to give us the greatest amount of movement that's going to have the greatest amount of impact on our students? And certainly, never do you want to have the federal government holding your hand, tying your hands, being able to tell you what you can and cannot do. But that's exactly what happened, and so there were specific parameters that we had to meet. It was not, we just got to choose whatever we wanted to do to correct this. It was the federal government saying, this is what you will follow. So multiple conversations back and forth to our regional service center to say, this is what we're thinking. Will this work? And multiple times, we got no's in response to what our plan was and how we would go about doing this work. And so we then went out on, for bid with RFQ, looking at those specific parameters that the federal government said that we had to follow, and then we got back four different bids on that. And I will say that some of those were not philosophically a good fit for Prosper ISD. It was going to push us in a way that would have been extremely upsetting to our community, but most importantly, to our students. Many people have asked, is this critical race theory? The answer is no. Is there a curriculum? The answer is no. This is consulting and coaching, and the best way that we felt about going about approaching the different parameters that we had was, how can we go through this lens? And how could we get this work moving, again, keeping in mind what's going to have the greatest impact on our students and really change mindsets on how we look at each of our students, no matter who they are? And so we decided that at that point in time, it would be best to go through a consulting and coaching model with our principals, because our principals act as the filter for each of our school communities. Our principals are tested, they are trusted for the decisions that they make, because they're hiring the staff on that campus, they're taking care of each and every one of those students on the campus each and every day, and they are also making sure that they're connecting with parents and knowing what the values of that school community are. And when you look at Prosper ISD, and you look at almost 20,000 students, and you look at 18 campuses, and I look at each of those school communities, they vary from place to place. Now, I will tell you right now, if Dr. McLeod and her work and her consulting and coaching with our principals, because I am checking in with them monthly, and they tell me that we are going off track, that this is taking us down a path that's not appropriate, and it's not in the best interest of our kids, the work is done. It is a phone call to Dr. McLeod to say, thank you for your time, but we are now finishing this work. But I will tell you that that is not a choice to not do this. That means we'll be back on the street looking for another RFQ to figure out, how are we going to take care of this issue and this concern? And so the federal government said, you will take 15% of your special education budget, and you will allocate it to this work, and you will make progress in this area. This chart that's in front of you right now is showing progress in this area. It provides data, and I do not want to, nor do I think it's appropriate, that we target one specific type of student when we're looking at this, because if we're having trouble with one groups, a group of students in Prosper ISD, there's a good chance we're having trouble with other groups of students. And so it is our job, and it is our responsibility, to make sure that we're looking at each and every student that we serve in this district, because each and every one of our students matters, no matter who they are, how much money they have in their pocket, or they do not have in their pocket, or what color they might be in the way that they walk into our schools. That is what each and every educator is committed to in this district, including myself and the school board, and that is exactly what we will do. If you look at our data there, you will see that from our 2019 to our 2020, 2021, we've made a significant move in the right direction with our in-school suspension placements. And you will see, especially at the high school level, the drastic difference that has occurred between those two years. And when we look at students and we look at the instructional setting, and you think about students and what they're not being provided, because they're sitting in a room isolated from the actual instruction and our high-quality teachers, that is an injustice. And so our job as an educator is to make sure that those students are getting exactly everything that we can provide to them, and that means keeping them in the classroom. It does not mean, if a student has poor behavior, that we're not going to address it, so please do not misinterpret that. We will take care of behavior, because every kid deserves a chance to learn. But we will also make sure that we're trying our absolute best at the administrative level to ensure that students are staying in the classroom and being educated at the highest level, which is what every single parent, no matter if it's a single mom who's working three jobs, or a mom and a dad, or whatever the, the family dynamic may be, our job is to make sure that those kids are learning and that we don't give them less than. And that is exactly the work that Dr. McLeod is doing. It is talking about relationships with students, and do you know your students? And if you don't know your students, then that is a problem, because how will you ever serve them, and how will you ever educate them? And that's exactly what's happening with our administrators at this point in time.
Great. Wow. Thank you.
Can I just ask real quick?
No.
No, you can.
No. The, thank you for that report, Dr. Ferguson. I appreciate it very much. Any comments or questions from the board?
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Ferguson, you did say in there, in no way, shape, or form is this critical race theory.
Yes, sir.
I have heard that question brought up, and I'm just making sure that we all understand you correctly. CRT has nothing to do with this.
You are 100% correct, Mr. Beavers.
Thank you.
And the unfortunate part on social media is people take it upon themselves to report out what we're doing or not doing, and that creates somewhat of a firestorm and for people to assume that things are going on. I do monthly coaching meetings with each of our campus administrators, and one of my questions in this past month has been, how is your work with Dr. McLeod? Each and every one of them has said it's been extremely beneficial, and it has left them in a place of reflecting and thinking about how they're serving all students on their campus, and how they're looking at each of their families, and then making sure that they're not unintentionally stereotyping or making decisions on a student, no matter what color they are.
Great. Great. Okay, the, please, the, any other comments on the school suspension report from Holly?
I'll continue to give you updates, so y'all can see where we're going with in-school suspension and what that looks like systemically across our district.
Great. Thank you very much. We all now have a discussion still on the consent agenda around COVID-19. The subcommittee met two weeks ago? A week ago?
It did.
Yeah. Will you, Mr. Beavers, will you give us a report on that, please?
Turn on my microphone. There we go. Yeah, so two Fridays ago, COVID subcommittee, we came together to discuss what was going on, a number since we've come back from spring break, since Governor Abbott removed the mask mandate. Dr. Ferguson, I think that you have some of those numbers. Could you walk us through real quick what we looked at that day?
Absolutely. So the first set that I want to bring up is student instructional changes. This was a document that we discussed when we met with the COVID subcommittee, because we wanted to see what impact it had on our students as far as what they were doing, withdrawals. Did we stay consistent over their mask numbers? Because one of the things that a lot of people don't understand about the school business, especially in the situation that we're in, is whenever that instructional setting gets switched, it also shifts our teachers, who may have been in person, and now we've got to pull them into instructional and, or into virtual. And that has been an ongoing dynamic all year long for them, because every time there's a marking period, and so we want to look at what happened with consistency. And what we saw with the mask staying in place at that point in time is that students returned to school, but also there was a level of consistency. And I think that's one of the things that we're all after, is how do we provide consistency for our students in that instructional setting? So we, we pulled numbers from that 319, 326 time. The next thing that we looked at is, the COVID subcommittee is also looking at what has happened as far as COVID positive cases with either campus exposure or no campus exposure. Now, the data that's sitting in front of you for the, the rest of the board, and for those who are attending the meeting, is that this is from August 12th until current date. So these numbers are reflective of what's happened the entire school year. But I think that one of the things that we must look at is how do we kind of narrow down? So you can see, we have it broken down by elementary, because I think that's a very different dynamic versus what happens in a middle school, and then certainly what we see that happens within our high schools. And when you think about the student numbers and student populations within a high school, that obviously is a larger number of students that we have that are attending school, as well as our middle schools. You can see we have high school students and then also the staff, because that's certainly a consideration that we needed to look at specifically. Now, to narrow down even a little bit more, so this is beginning with the, the week of 3/8, and then that takes us into kind of right there, April 4th. You can see the symptomatic cases that we had, the contact, the confirmed cases, and then confirmed with no exposure, screening responses. So that's that screening response that we still have in place, where parents report in, or students could report in that they have symptoms. And then these are our weekly positive cases, and you can see kind of where we're landing on all of that. And then this is also another key piece of information, because the big determining factor as we were looking at this as a subcommittee and as a board is, what about our staff? And I believe that Ms. Ball spoke about the staff when she was up doing her public comment. And that certainly was a huge consideration. We quickly jumped into action with Dr. Bradley, and many of us jumping in, trying to find places where we could get vaccines, because the, the one key factor is, is that the governor never put educators on the priority list. And so we wanted to make sure that teachers and staff had a chance to get fully vaccinated if they were choosing to do so. You'll see that we have 51% of our staff, and we have 1,296 people who are answering this. We do this survey weekly, because TEA asked us to do that weekly, and then you've got your partially vaccinated, and that's around 10%. So those are our people who are probably waiting for their second shot within that cycle. And then from there, I have an appointment to receive the first dose, and we know that's around 1.47%. And then also looking at, basically, I wanted to schedule an appointment, but I just haven't gotten there yet. So we, we know that that group, and what we discussed, is that that group's probably not as committed or as concerned about the health and safety aspects of things, but then I'm not interested in receiving a COVID-19 vaccine. So when we look at that 25, 26% with our 51%, then we're sitting around 76% of our staff is saying, I don't want it, or I'm fully vaccinated. And I think probably within the week or so, we'll have that 10% of I'm partially vaccinated. They'll probably be popping into the I'm fully vaccinated, because timeline-wise, they should be getting their second shot.
Right. That's very helpful.
So that was the slide that we spent a lot of time on, as discussing as a subcommittee, and where does that leave us? And going forward, what does that look like? From there, obviously, the discussion turned to next year, and what does that mean? With these numbers, where we see it trending since spring break time, with everybody able to get a vaccine, and where we're going, we thought that there is great reason for next year to be mask optional, is what we were looking at. So that's what we bring before you tonight to discuss, is, hey, we are trending in the right direction here to either possibly take action for next year or look at year or look at what the TEA is doing to let that expire here at the end of the year and next year in Prosper ISD, be mask optional, the contract tracing for both student and teachers that want to be so.
Got it. So again, that's assuming that we have no new outbreaks or TEA doesn't decide to do something.
That's correct. I mean, obviously, I think that we all learned this past year that, hey, there is new information that comes to light all the time and you make judgment calls as you see necessary. But with this information in hand right now, it does look like the best course of action is to go to optional this next year.
Thoughts on that, board?
So we really have two things.
Your mic's not on, Jenna.
I'm sorry.
You're good.
You had it for a second. There you go.
So really, we're looking at two different issues with the masks. We're looking at how we're going to, our recommendation for beginning of the school year, for this upcoming school year, and how we end moving forward to complete this current year.
Let's stick with, let's stick with the subject Bill brought up was next year.
Yeah. I think that's a big one. We talked a lot about teachers and what that means to them. I think the teachers need the opportunity to plan on what they're going to do. We've talked about that a lot. Thank you again, Ms. Ball, for what you said this evening, talking about the teachers. They need to be able to plan whether, hey, do they want to be mask optional or do they not, knowing that we as a district feel like students and other teachers would be mask optional. If that's not something that works for them, they would, at this point in the year, have a chance to possibly look at another district if they decided that is what's best for them. And we would hate to lose good teachers, but they also need to have a chance to know what our direction is going forward. Then also, there are a number of teachers that are at the point of retirement that they're going, "Well, we could go ahead. If we didn't have to wear a mask possibly next year, I might stay around." So we want everybody to have ample opportunity just to plan for next year.
And it would allow our families to do their own planning.
Absolutely.
Yeah. We talked about the fact that what TEA did, if we flashback to when all this began, it was spring break and we turned education around in just a matter of a couple of days and we hit the ground running with virtual learning and then we stayed there for nine weeks. Then TEA did a roll all the way through the summer, June, July, and we get down to about two weeks before school starts and we're again in this, okay, we've got to get this turned around. We've got to get teachers back in. And we had people retiring and also resigning because they didn't want to work in this environment. They weren't sure that it was safe. They had all of their different reasons. So really, as a Subcommittee, we were talking about the kind thing to do for our families is that they have time to really think through this decision and look at what does this mean between now and August? But also for our staff to be able to say, "I'm not okay with this" or "I am okay with this and this is a fit for me." But giving that processing time versus in two weeks, we're going to start school, or in two days, we're going to start school. And it was very cruel because it was, I don't really care what your opinion is, we've got to have school is what the model has been. So we really want to break that cycle to give our families, students, staff, time to figure out what does this mean.
So if a family does decide, "Hey, I'm not ready to go to school, mask optional or not, we're staying. We don't want to put our kid in that environment." What are we telling them?
So one of the things that we're looking at, Mr. Shirley and his team have been doing a great job, is looking through what are other districts as well as ourselves, what does our virtual learning component look like? And what we're going to look at, because we obviously, I don't think anyone's naive to the fact that we ran into a lot of issues where screens were not on, kids were not engaged in learning, and then we got extremely concerned about failure rates and things like that. And then we were able to bring those students back in. So we were really looking at a set criteria that this was truly a good fit for this child. They were engaged in learning. They were able to turn their work in on time. Their grades were where they needed to be. They were reaching out for help with teachers. But it also allows us, if we have this virtual learning survey, to then also be kind to our staff once again because this will impact them on, are you going to teach in person? Are we going to deem you a virtual teacher? And I will tell you, the majority of our teachers, they don't want to teach virtually. I don't think any of them went to school so that they couldn't have human connection with kids. And so this has been extremely daunting. And when we talk about mental health, there's many of them that have really struggled with the fact, I have to look at kids through a screen and I just want to be in a room with them. And so I think, again, the kind thing to do is to know where those numbers are for that virtual learning option and then be able for our principals to sit down with them and say, "It looks like you're going to be the virtual teacher or the in-person teacher" so they know what their destiny looks like moving forward.
Is there any concern with funding? Is that, is funding from this?
No.
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 Thank you. Is there any concern with funding for the state? Do we know that virtual learners will be funded by the state just like they are?
Right now, what they're telling us, us is that that option is there and that the funding is there. Now, if they come back in the next month and say, "We're not funding it," that's going to be extremely detrimental because we know that we're going to lose students. We have about 5,000 students who are sitting in virtual learning and that's a scary thought because we want those students to come back. But we're hoping with vaccines and knowing what that future looks like, that some of our families will make that decision to go ahead and come on back.
Good. Other questions or concerns coming out of the Subcommittee? So if we wanted to, if we wanted to let the TEA guideline or mandate or whatever we want to call that expire, we don't have to take any action. Where's Jeff? See him around? We don't have to take any actions. I understand that just naturally expires and we would be back? Nope. Okay. 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 Good. Yeah, so I think that we don't have to take action. I kind of would like at some point for us to take action on that. I think it would show support for the administration if that's the direction that we want to go. We don't need to do anything tonight. We're just hearing the report from the Subcommittee.
Sure. You know, I think one of the things Dr. Bradley brought up, you know, if we talked about, you know, who knows what's going to happen this summer, right? So if we, if we say that we're going to go mask optional, it doesn't mean that if a lot of things go wrong during the summer or whatever else, that it may not, it may change at some point. But I think his comment was, we probably have a lot bigger things to worry about. There'd be a lot more businesses closing and jobs gone and everything else if we end up having to go, you know, if we have to shut everything back down again. So again, I think the intent would be that we move forward with that. But barring, you know, some, you know, terrible happening over the summer.
I would like to go ahead. If you all are in agreement that we go ahead and give that communication to our families to let them know that mask will be optional next year, staff, so everyone is aware and they can start adjusting. I think we've got plenty of lead time. We're not asking for tomorrow for them, for that to happen. One of the considerations we need to think about too is we'll have summer school in place. Just as soon as school ends, we'll have special education, summer school, and then other summer school opportunities. So we really need to think about too, are masks going to be optional at that point so that that way those administrators and teachers know what the rules are moving forward.
Okay. Good. Well, I want to make sure that we handle this the right way. I think that's, I think that's fine. As it seems, this is not a voting, we're not voting on this, but it feels like that's the heart of the board and that we can, don't have to take action on that to ratify anything, but I think we can feel comfortable sharing that.
I think when we send this out to parents, when that time occurs, I think we need to stay in there in that verbiage that in the event that something out of our control takes place, that we have the option to come back and discuss how we're going to handle that.
Absolutely. Yeah.
But I think it needs to be stated that the world can change and we can't, you know, predict what's going to happen in our world.
Yeah, that's right.
I think Shana's a district that we can pivot quickly.
That's right.
My goodness, that's the one thing we have learned this year.
That we can let the teachers and families know as soon as possible what the plan is for next year.
I think that they probably will know after tonight. I feel confident that people are in here happy to share that news and.
It possibly may already be out there.
Good to see already out there.
But we want to make sure we do it the correct way, but I think that's certainly the intent of the board, feels like.
Okay.
Is there any discussion to be had about this year? You know, I know that the masks have been a tool to allow us to get back in here this year. I know that we are close on the year. We are, we do have a lot of good things happening with end-of-the-year celebrations, being able to celebrate those students, their milestones, teachers, the amazing jobs that they've done this year. You know, any thoughts by anybody in here? The main thing that the Subcommittee was talking about was, we did speak briefly on this, but next year, wanting to indicate that moving forward. Is there any other questions or concerns that y'all have about this year or anything that needs to be discussed there?
I would love to have further conversation with it means we need to schedule a special meeting to address this year. You know, obviously, the first, a month ago, was making sure that education remains constant and the continuity of education, that our teachers felt okay, families felt safe in school. But with the numbers, with teachers being vaccinated, more families and even now teens getting vaccinated, I think it is definitely something we should address for the remainder of the year. I know we're down to, what'd we say, 23 more days?
23 days.
And we're on the head of a stretch.
Clap, clap. 23 days.
So I would personally like to see a special meeting that we can discuss.
Because then, that's my biggest issue. We only have three, four weeks left and you're talking about disrupting families, teachers, everything switching, people, you know, because we, as we heard, there's people who would not be able to go in person if they've got a family member who's impacted by it. And so you're going to have, you're going to have a turmoil raised in three or four weeks. I'm no different to whoever spoke. I hate these sayings. I've been vaccinated, you know. But, you know, at the end of the day, my kid plays baseball. We're going to be able to have, you know, playoff games. Reed's whole baseball team recently in Frisco got quarantined and they missed two district games. We're going to have prom. We're going to have graduation. And I just hate to see, you know, last year, the seniors really got the short end of the stick.
I sure did.
And I'd hate to see anything that we did. Again, you can argue the validity of masks or not mask, whatever it is. I can, for everybody that said that don't work, I can guarantee I'll go find somebody to do. But I just, we're at the finish line. Why do something to try to mess things up with three or four weeks left?
And as, I just want to interject this. I like the idea of having a special meeting, but also I've been contacting during this time period just to get, just for my own knowledge, how people are feeling out there. And I've contacted people in my neighborhood, even neighbors with children that I rarely see anymore. And the pulse of kids waiting at the bus stop, which is, happens to be, the bus stop is right on my corner. I go out and I talk to those kids. They're sitting there on the big boulders out there. I'm asking them, "Hey, guys, how do you feel about these masks?" "Well, Ms. Thompson, you know, we don't like them." And I'm like, "I don't like them either. But do you think we just should allow y'all to just, you know, do what you want to do?" And every single student I have taught to, all different ages, elementary, middle school, and high school kids and their parents, and either just a neighborhood conversation or seeing people up at Kroger or whatever, when I ask them, "Hey, tell me about the masks. How do you feel about this?" They say, "We don't need to stop it now. It's just like not a big deal." I keep hearing from older kids, "It's just not a big deal. We don't like it, but it's just not that big of a deal." And I am concerned if we just, with 23 days left of school, say, "Okay, we're now going to make this optional." It's a real, in my mind, having been a principal for 18 years, it would be a big pivot for our staff and for our families when we are so close to just completing our school year with all that's already been in place all year. So I'm just throwing that out there.
Okay.
We could certainly have a discussion about it. I think one of the things, just on the heels of Mr. Davenport's comment, because I have been looking specifically at that whole close contact piece and then quarantining kids. What we talked about is that possibly what we need to look at is just the household. So if we've got a sibling set or say, "Mom teaches for us and she's positive," and then that means immediately that child, that to take a whole entire class out or a whole entire team out just seems like something that we could back off of, especially with where the numbers are right now. I do think as far as close contact and informing, one thing that we would certainly need to commit to would be our centralized programs, especially with our students that are less verbal, to be able, because, right, you know what happens. I know what happens in my home. "Hey, Mom, so-and-so was positive today. Well, have you been around him?" You know, and that's the conversation. But I know that that's not the luxury that every family experiences when their child comes home. So I think that is an area that we would have to close contact, be in steady communication because they're not always going to know, "Was that a symptom that I need to be watchful of and could this be COVID?" And with our special education students sometimes being so much more medically fragile, we want parents to be able to be on high alert for anything that may push to that end because we never want to lose a kiddo.
Okay. We can look, we can look at whether we address something or have the committee meet again and kick those ideas. I think the Subcommittee thing has worked very well. It's allowed us to move a lot more quickly. So any more thoughts on your report? I want to thank the Subcommittee very much for taking the time to do that.
Happy to.
This has been the world's longest consent agenda, but it does need a motion for approval.
I'll go back to my original motion as presented.
Amazed with the motion. I have a second.
I will second.
Second from Mr. Bill Beavers. All in favor? Great. Thank you. Okay, we'll move into the education.
So this would take us.
Yes, I will say, this is, sorry that the consent agenda was so long. For those of you that just came to speak, there's never an elegant time to break, but yeah, feel free to leave whenever you want to unless you want to stay for the education and the financial pieces. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Holly.
Okay. Mr. Crown over. I think I jumped the gun, so just trying to steal your thunder earlier. I apologize.
He's had to come up here twice to slap us.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, Dr. Ferguson, members of the board. This is sure to be less exciting, what we just discussed, so I'll apologize in advance, but not, not that it's not important. So by way of background, three legislative sessions ago, the legislature gave school districts the option of exempting themselves out of certain provisions of the Education Code. And there's a long list of laws you could exempt yourself out of and a lot of districts took advantage of that. Dr. Ferguson was the, was on that DOI Committee five years ago. She has a new job now, so I've taken that over for her. And so we got the committee back together back on May the 7th, I'm sorry, March the 17th, because these plans can only last for five years. So we're coming up on the expiration of the plan. And so it's time to kind of look at it, see if it still kind of makes sense. There were only four provisions the last time that the DOI Committee recommended. And so as we'll go through these kind of one by one briefly here in a minute, but we're going to add one more potential, you know, provision this evening that the committee thought made sense. And so I think it may be up here on the screen, although you have a copy of it, just by way of, again, you guys approved these five years ago, but just by way of reminder, the first is an exemption from the first day of instruction. The law says it has to be on the fourth Monday of August. A lot of districts have done this as well to allow us to start school earlier, which for a number of reasons is beneficial to our students and parents. The next is some teacher certification requirements for STEM and some hard-to-fill kind of positions. I'm happy to report in the five years since this, we haven't had to use this one. We've been able to find certified teachers in these areas. So we'd like to continue to have the flexibility, but so far we haven't had to use it, just FYI. The third one is related to the T-test. There are kind of three provisions of how we evaluate teachers and one of them is a student growth measure. On the committee, five years ago, decided that for a couple different reasons, that didn't make sense here. Number one, student growth is difficult to tie to a teacher's evaluation, if that makes sense. There's a lot of things that go into a student's growth. But then two, the committees, whose name I'm drawing, PLCs. Why couldn't I think of PLCs?
Professional communities.
Boy, I can't forget PLC. So we have PLCs. These are very, very important.
They are very important.
And so that, a lot of that work happens there, right? So these teachers, we look at the student growth measures and they're able to kind of work through some of it. So we're not ignoring student growth by any stretch of the imagination. It's just difficult to measure on a T-test evaluation. And so want to keep that flexibility there as well. And then the last one is the district five years ago, and then we continue to want to allow for more parent involvement on the district site-based decision-making process, which I can't imagine anybody would argue with that. I think it's good to have more apparent involvement if at all possible. All right. So the one that we wanted to add this year is related to employee contract rights. rights and then, and then suspension with pay, and so let me kind of explain the thought process there. So if a, under the, under chapter 21 of the education code, which is, which governs all of our teachers, administrators, diagnosticians, nurses, I'm gonna leave somebody out there. So there's a group of people, they get these certain contract rights. When they come to us, if in the previous eight years, they have five years of experience in education, the law says you're only permitted to give them one year of probation, okay? If they have less than five years, we can give them up to three years of probation. And so the situation a lot of principals kind of gave us feedback on, is that you really don't even have a year, right? You hire somebody in August, you really kind of see them in August, and then by February, March, we gotta make decisions on, are they coming back next year or not? And so that's not really a lot of time for, for a teacher, especially in a place like Prosper, being, being new here, I can tell you, the standards are high here, which is very good, and so sometimes it takes even experienced teachers a little bit of time to adjust to what's going on in Prosper, and so it gives our principals the ability to say, we're gonna bring you back, we're gonna keep you on probation just for another year, just to make sure everything is, is, you know, is up to speed with what we expect here in Prosper. And I'll tell you this too, we, we got feedback early on, of course, some of these teacher groups didn't like it, right, because it seems like it's taking rights away. But I can tell you, what I've seen happen time and time again, and a lot of teacher groups are coming around on, is for an experienced teacher coming in, if you have to make that decision in March, and you're not sure what to do, a lot of times, you lead toward just ending the probationary contract, right, because it's a lot easier to do versus going to a term. So this is something that I do think benefits teachers, actually, because it gives them another year to kind of, again, especially in a place like Prosper, to kind of settle in to what, what Prosper's about, and, and, and so it's good to be able to utilize that. And then the last thing is, so there is a, just to make sure we understand how this works, and this is something that, in my 11-plus years of practicing, I've never seen happen, but, but it's some, a lot of districts have included in their DOI plan, is to give us some flexibility. And so teachers under the chapter 21 that I mentioned earlier, if, no matter what, if we want to terminate a contract or not renew a contract, it doesn't matter what the teacher did, they have a series of things they get to do no matter what, a hearing, appeal, it can be a fairly lengthy process. During the pendency of that, the way the law is written now, we are not permitted to, we have to continue to pay the teachers while that's happening, okay? So that, that's the idea, is there, there, if we wanted to not renew or terminate the, the contract, it could be several months of time when we would be paying these employees, and it's happened in other districts, but not, it's not terribly common. And so it's a, it's a fiscal responsibility thing, right? The idea is, if, if we're so certain we need to terminate or not renew a teacher, we shouldn't have to pay them while all of these processes are laying out. But you'll see the way this is written here, we're talking about serious provisions of the educator code of ethics, we're saying that any of these decisions are subject to the grievance process, so if you're concerned that Dr. Ferguson is just gonna go wild with this, you would have absolute control over it, right, because it could, could come through to you through the, through the grievance process. And so that is the idea there, right? We don't anticipate ever using this, but it's just a, it's just a way that if we do get in a situation, we're not spending thousands and thousands of dollars in that particular situation, so.
Mr. Crownover, just to clarify, our employees would continue to have the right to do process, just like they've always had.
Hundred percent, yeah, it doesn't take any of those rights away, it just means, well, we're waiting on those rights, we're not paying them, and, the way the law works, if they go through the process and they prevail and we're wrong, we would owe them back paid for that whole time, right? So, so if they're, if they didn't do anything wrong and we messed up, they're gonna be made whole. So it's just a situation where they, they do something so egregious, and you guys know, rarely are terminations or non-renewals taken to a board, it's an extremely rare thing. So, again, this is just, this is just a, just in case kind of thing that a lot of districts have, have taken advantage of, but this is just five areas of the law we think we ought to be exempted from, out of, you know, dozens and dozens we could have, so, so we wanted to kind of keep it, keep it narrowed down. But that's the thought process behind these, these provisions, so we would obviously recommend that you guys approve that, the plan would be for another five years, and so in 2026, we'd be, you know, in theory, coming back again to talk about whether or not that makes sense. The law requires us to have posted this for 30 days, we did that over 30 days ago, so it's been out there, now we had the hearing previously, so now we just need your approval if you see fit, and then what would happen is, the board policy would change to reflect whatever decision you made tonight, if you decided to go that route.
Thank you, Mr. Crownover, any questions for Mr. Crownover, on the District of Innovation and Renewal? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Debra, second?
Second.
Thank you very much, all in favor? Great, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have...
Your Deana for that, sorry, yeah.
I'm sorry, the consideration and possible approval of the Edflex school-wide eligibility waiver. So this breaks down each of our campuses, and so when you're looking at this Edflex waiver for Title I, which is federal government funds, you look at your campuses that exceed the district average, and currently, the district average for our economically disadvantaged students is at 8%. So any campus that exceeds that 8% then qualifies for funding. And so what we do with this is, there is obviously training for each of the campus principals on what this looks like for their campus improvement plans, but it also then goes a bit further than that, it's us working with our regional education service center to make sure that we're in, in compliance, and that we're doing everything that we need to. And about July, we receive federal funding, and then the campus principals are brought back in to determine how they would like to utilize those funds to meet the needs of students on their campus. And so many times, I would say probably almost every time, I think, in the last several years that I know I've been involved in this, and my previous role is there choosing personnel for intervention for either math or reading support to help students that may be struggling in those areas. So it's just a great benefit for us to be able to access that funds, and the beauty of it is, there's not red tape on it, like what we talked about previously.
Okay. Great, thank you, we have a, need a motion to approve the Edflex school-wide eligibility waiver?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Ask a quick question here.
Sorry.
How many levels does this go through before it gets up to the board? Like, what we through, just the background of it a little bit?
Okay, so you're gonna have to, number one, you have to start with a group of leaders to identify, and that's gonna be typically Ms. Slicker to go, okay, where, where are we looking at, what students do we have that fall in this area? And that's usually in October, because we have a snapshot date, which is the last Friday of October. That then identifies and kind of triggers us to the next step, to know that we need to even apply or go after this Edflex. Then we have to submit a submission into Region 10, which they're working with us, which is our educational service center, to give us guidance on what does that look like. Then we bring it to the board to say, okay, could we get approval to be able to do this? Our next step then is, you're bringing those principals in, which many of them have already gone through training on what do we write specifically, and how do we include the correct verbiage within our campus improvement plan that targets these specific goals. If you're looking at campus improvement plan, you're looking at parents, you're looking at staff, and you're looking at the administrator, as well as any business partners that might be on that campus improvement team, as we're looking at developing those. And then, of course, we bring campus improvement plans to you all as a board, for you to put your seal of approval on those before we move forward. And then at that point, when we do receive the funds, then it's another step in the process for us to sit down with the campus principal to say, there's X amount of dollars, how would we like to utilize that? Personnel is typically the, the way to go, because then we know directly how that impact is. Now, the money will vary by campus, depending on what they receive and their number of that economically disadvantaged number, because some of our student campuses are in greater need than others, and so we may be looking at, okay, we have enough money for intervention to begin in November and then end in May. Or it may be, hey, you get intervention to start in September, and then it's gonna end in May. So it just kind of varies. We're typically hiring in, obviously, certified teachers that are highly skilled in these areas, but we're also looking for someone who's willing to do kind of an hourly, part-time type job. So a lot of times, I know, like Ms. Cannon has a very highly skilled individual at Baker Elementary, who is a retired teacher, who said, great, I'll come in, and I'll be glad to do this reading work, and we've seen, obviously, great improvement with the students.
Good.
So multiple, multiple levels.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Good question, Debra, okay? Still asking for a motion?
I'll still make the motion.
All right, thank you, Hannah. Maize got it all in favor? Okay, very good.
Okay, next on the agenda is a consideration and possible approval of the 2021-2022 allotment TEAC certification, so that begins the process for us to be able to submit to TEA so that we can access or begin receiving our instructional materials allotment fund. If we don't access those funds from the state, then that is a general fund impact, and it is pretty significant, because textbooks are not cheap. What we do, just as background on this, whenever we get a new adoption, you're looking at anywhere from eight to 10 years that you're staying with an adoption typically, sometimes longer, depending on the adoption cycle from the state. But then what we do is, we put together a team of teachers, curriculum designers, and support staff, as well as principals, assistant principals that serve on that committee, along with curriculum specialists in that area. We go through a rubric, and we look at each of the instructional materials that are being presented to us, and then we rate that based on what the committee is seeing. We also take those out to campuses, so that teachers can peruse, look through the materials to see what is, how is this gonna have an impact on our instruction, and what we're being provided within the classroom as a potential material and for instruction. And then past that point, then we bring those to you for approval. We didn't have any adoptions this year, but every year, we have to do a TEAC certification, saying that the materials we have are in alignment with the Texas essential knowledge and skills. So it just begins the process for us to be able to submit that to TEA, to go ahead and start accessing those instructional material allotment funds. We still have to make up some of the difference at the local level, just in full transparency, because it's never enough money from the state.
Great, okay. Any questions on that? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion too.
Thank you, Deb, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kelly, all in favor? All right.
Business.
Business.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So here we have the financial report through March 31st, and again, we've mentioned before that in prior months, we were tracking along from before COVID prior year. So beginning in March, and here through the end of the year, we're gonna see some differences, and we'll just remember that last year was just a very different year, as far as our income, revenues, expenditures, et cetera. So we're looking at our investment portfolio through March 31st. This represents all funds of the school district, and our investment cash balance is $263 million, compared to $278 last year, slight decrease in overall funds. For the general fund alone, we have 59.4% of the overall portfolio. We used to have a lot, a larger number with the bond funds compared to general operating fund. We will be looking at another bond issue in August pending the July value certified, so that's something that we're looking towards as well. Benchmark performance through March 31st were .06 of 1%, so again, slightly down from prior month, these are relatively zero at the moment. A year ago, the rates were substantially higher, and our earnings were higher as well. We do hope that over the next 12 to 24 months, we do see some increase in rates, just so that we can supplement our general operating budget, to be able to put those towards instructional expenditures. And this chart as well shows all the financial institutions that the district has invested its money in as well. And the very bottom one is the Texas termed fixed rate, it's an investment pool, but we can lock in portions of funds for a slightly longer period, nothing exceeding 12 months. And you can see we have a little bit, it's our highest rate there, with our days of maturity for those two securities at 88 days. Going to the next page, this is the general fund only. So prior year, month to date, which would have been March of '20, we had $158 million, $156 million year, so far in investments, a little slight decrease from prior year. And this shows the total general fund. Revenue by source for general operating, last year, we had $140 million, this year $152, so 8% increase, we're tracking right along where we would expect due to our overall budget increase from prior year. Revenue by source for general operating fund, the budget revenue is still $178, collected year-to-date, $152. So the percent collection is 85, compared to 92% last year. We remember that tax rate compression has been in effect for two years now, after House Bill 3. We're currently in a legislative session, and one of the things that I wanted to point out using this slide, is one of the bills that's being discussed this week, actually, by the House of Representatives, is asking school districts to look at their fund balance, and the state is considering a cap, a maximum, on fund balances. And one of the things, we have 1,100 school districts in the state of Texas, everyone has a very different financial story and outlook. Some districts are declining enrollment, and no one is hypersonic growth the way Prosper is. So our reserves need, have different needs, and have different reasons for them, and the time, how much time bound they are too, is very important. For instance, just this month, we received notice that the state of Texas has finalized their calculations for last school year, for our revenue. So whenever they are just have a, the, the timing of information, which is the audit report and these kinds of things, it really prohibits them from being able to finalize the revenue picture that we think is very quick and is happening in real time, but that's not the case at all. And so our fund balance is that buffer between when we have to spend funds, and when the state allocates us revenue. Even the federal funds worth transition dollars, if we have FEMA outlay, or we have insurance types of things, our fund balance is what we dip into in those moments of crisis or uncertainty, until everybody else can step up to the plate and make the district whole. Just wanted to sort of highlight that for those that might not understand how the fund balance supports our monthly activities. We look at tax collections, current month, 3.1 compared, you can see the tax collection window right there is very standard and predictable as well. The tax office did send out tax statements to taxpayers this month, I think those of you might have seen those.
Yes.
And, and so there's some questions also about the, the tax, not the values per se, but the taxable rate, and just wanted to remind everyone that the tax rate from prior year will be different for the school, and we're not used to that. We're used to a very stable tax rate for school districts statewide, but compression is changing those, and so the tax notices may look a little different. The current year levy percentage is 97% collected year-to-date compared to 101 prior year, but we don't see any concern for this, it's just not gonna be an issue for us for the entire year through August. Ad rollback collections have picked up a little bit, we had zero for a very long time this year, and January and February, about $450,000 each month, since September, $1,068. Looking at our expenditures by major object for the general fund only, current year, $113 million expended compared to $94 million prior year, 19% increase overall. And on the far right, you'll see the transfer out, again, that is the $10 million for the local bond construction monies, and then the 2.5 for the Mayhar property. This is another way of looking at the expenditures by major object for the general operating fund, percent of completion, you'll see prior year 59%, and current year 59% as well, so tracking along right there, very predictably year to year. The athletics fund, results of operations so far through March, $160,000. And the child nutrition fund, prior year, this is when we had, we had been on COVID for two weeks with no revenue, but again, we were serving families in the community, the federal government was very good about allowing us to get a community-wide program going, and we were able to do that as well. So far year-to-date, $215,000, results of operations. The current contract for child nutrition by federal calendar ends June 30. Debt service fund, sorry about that, $19 million collected year-to-date, prior year $21 million. These collections every year stand alone, your debt service payments are encapsulated and, and can be different from year to year. Our next payment is due August 15th. And very exciting, our last two slides, Reeves Elementary School, the 55% of expenditures completed year-to-date on the construction contract, $13 million expended on that one. And then Bryant Elementary School, a lot farther along, as we can see, 82% completed on that contract. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Fulmer.
Thank you, Ms. Fulmer. Any questions on our financial report? Always do such a good job, thank you. Okay, well then I will have, entertain a motion to approve that report.
I'll make a motion.
Bill, and then Kelly. Thank you, Ms. Fulmer. Any questions on our financial report? Always do such a good job. Thank you. Okay, well then I will have to entertain a motion to approve that report. Bill and then Kelly. Perfect. All in favor? Great.
Okay, there you go.
Budget amendments?
We do not have any budget amendments and we do not have land to purchase at this time.
So I will make a motion that we enter into executive session. Bill, second? Second by Deb. All in favor? So we will be entering into executive session. We will discuss what we discuss in there and we will come out and take whatever action we're going to take. I want to thank you all again for joining us tonight and good evening.
To order. Back from executive session at whatever time it is. We need a motion to accept the resignations.
I'll make a motion.
Kelly, second.
Yes.
Oh, may the winds. All in favor?
Okay.
Great. We need a motion to accept the new hires.
I'll make a motion to accept the new hires.
Thank you, Deb. Second, Jana. All in favor? Need a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Mr. Beavers?
I'm second.
Dina, all in favor? Buenas noches.